Okay. Is the council ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening. Excuse me. Welcome to our city council meeting. This is our regular consolidated agenda where we'll be discussing items that are on the city council agenda, as well as those that are on the Community Development Commission agenda, and also the Buenos sanitation district. If we could start by asking the city clerk to please call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Okay, as some of you have missed... Sorry, I'm having a hard time here. As many of you may have read, in reaction to the anniversary of 9/11, President Bush has declared today as Patriots' Day. And he's asked us to fly our flag at half mast, which ours is being flown at half mast. And in order to pay tribute to those valiant firefighters and police officers and others that had to deal with 9/11 and may have lost their lives, he's asked if we wouldn't have a moment of silence. So if you could join me in this moment of silence in commemoration of the events of Thank you very much. Today, we've asked Reverend Michael Carr of the All Saints Episcopal Church to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then if you'd remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Peter, God, you are always more willing to give than we are to ask or deserve. Pour into our hearts the healing of your spirit, especially on this, the 11th day of September, when we feel such sorrow and loss. We pray for both the victims and for those families and loved ones who grieve this day. May your love continue to be with them, and may your love continue to heal our nation. We also pray that you would send down on those who gather to serve our city of Vista, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. God, hear our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Reverend Carr. We appreciate that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and we'll ask the -- our city manager, Mrs. Geldert, is there any change in the agenda?
Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
Okay, and we did not have a closed session today, so there's nothing to report. It gives me a great deal of pleasure. We have two proclamations that we would like to issue today, and I'll come down and we'll take it from there. As you can tell, I'm all choked up about being here at the city council meeting. The first proclamation is in commemoration of National Civic Awareness Month, and we have with us today our superintendent of the Vista Unified School District, Dr. Joyce Bales. And if you'd like to come forward, Dr. Bales, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then give it to you, and then ask you to say a few words.
Thank you.
It says that whereas there is an alarming lack of civic knowledge among students and adults covering basic concepts in American history, politics, and government, the bedrocks of good citizenship; and whereas children who are exposed at a young age to the importance of good citizenship are more likely to become engaged, involved, and informed adults. Moreover, children who learn about government in school are apt to share this information with parents. Whereas to educate young people about how local governments work and the importance -- an important role that they play in our daily lives, many communities and schools have developed and endorsed civics and local government education programs and curricula. And whereas National Civic Awareness Month promotes citizen participation in programs and events pertaining to civic activities, in addition, studies have shown that knowledge of civics was closely tied to voting and community engagement. Whereas the city of Vista recognizes the -- and supports all efforts to promote greater civic awareness among the people of Vista, including civic awareness programs such as candidate forums, voter registration drives, civic responsibility, and the city of Vista's school city hall tours, in which third-grade classes learn how the city council and different departments within the city operate to ensure that local governments -- our local government works for the benefit of all. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim September 2007 as National Civic Awareness Month in the city of Vista. Dr. Bales, if I could present that to you?
Thank you.
And then ask you to maybe say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Vance, and council members. It was a great pride. I accept this proclamation, and as a promise to you, I will carry it forward to our Board of Trustees and share it with our principals, teachers, and students in the district. This year, our theme is achieving excellence in leading, teaching, learning, and supporting. And we do know that character education, civic responsibility, is a major part of a quality education. And in return, I would like to present to mayor and council members with a copy of our accountability report that I had a chance to share just recently, and to tell you that we're making major strides in education in this community, and I think you'll be very proud to see that Olive Elementary School made a 60-point gain, Beaumont made 50, and Foothill Oak made 42, for a total of 96 points, which are major gains, and our English-language learners have just made stra -- great strides this year. And so I want to present a copy of that to you and the council members, and to say thank you for presenting us this proclamation as a reminder to our civic duty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
The next proclamation is to be issued with regard to emergency preparedness in the city of Vista, and we'll ask our good fire chief to come forward and issue the proclamation to him. And this proclamation says that whereas California residents have experienced the effects of various disasters ranging from severe winter storms to major earthquakes and devastating wildfires, resulting in damage costing hundreds of millions of dollars; and whereas Southern California has currently experienced prolonged record-breaking drought and extreme fire conditions that heighten -- that highlight the importance of disaster preparedness, both at the individual and institutional levels; and whereas the aftermath of the largest firestorm in California's history demonstrated the necessity for careful and thorough emergency planning and preparedness among individuals, communities, and local agencies; and whereas the loss of life and property damage can be greatly reduced if appropriate emergency preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a major emergency; whereas the Vista City Council urges all persons to participate in the countywide duck, cover, and hold drill on Tuesday, September 25th, at 9:00 a.m. by taking proactive actions as an earthquake -- as if an earthquake had actually occurred. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim September 2007 as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Vista. And we'll present that to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And would you like to say anything?
Okay, just a couple of brief remarks. Thanks to the mayor and council for this proclamation. As you may recall, and you mentioned earlier, six years ago, we had a disaster in this country. It cost 3,000 casualties, 3,000 lives. That could likely happen again. Here closer to home, we have the 2003 fires that cost several hundred million dollars in property damage and a lot of lives. That could probably happen again. I guess my point that I'm trying to make is, is that disasters are not an if situation or a when situation. They will happen, and so we would encourage everyone in the city of Vista to prepare for that, participate in the drill that's coming up on Tuesday. And I would also pass along that we have put some information out in the lobby just to help you prepare for these kinds of events, and you're welcome to that. And if you have any questions, the fire department is always available to help you with those questions and provide those answers. So again, thank you, Mayor and council. I appreciate that very much.
I just want to say on a personal note, last summer, we were awakened about, what was it, about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning up on the east side of Vista, with the suggestion that we evacuate our homes, that there was a fire. And as we walked out, we saw this wall of fire up behind us, and it's very, very intimidating. And I know that's a very stressful time for the residents that are here, but we're thankful that we have such a wonderful fire department, and Chief Fisher has just done such a great job. This is a very stressful job for you, isn't it?
It is. It has its moments.
I brought you something here. This is a stress reliever.
Great. I could use one of these.
Good. Well, thank you for all your good work. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, these are two proclamations that are very near and dear to my heart. I remember as an eighth grader in a civics class, that's where I first had an indication that government was one of my favorite subjects in school. And then I had a ninth and 10th grade civics teacher that just did a marvelous job of relating to us the importance of not only local government, but state and federal government as well, and the history of this wonderful country that we live in. And after those two -- or those three classes, I was pretty well sold, and so that they've been very important. It was a very important part of my life and led me to a career, as well as to this office that I now hold. So, Dr. Bales, we're grateful for the things that you teach your students there about government, and if anything we -- if there's anything we can do to help, we'd certainly like to. Okay, let's move on to our agenda. We have one oral communication, and that's from, I believe it's Scott Falls. Am I pronouncing that correct? Okay. Please come forward.
My name's Scott Falls, and this is really hard for me because I'm pretty much point-blank and in-your-face kind of guy. And so I'll just be as polite as I can. I'm not here to educate you on the problems that illegal immigration has on America today, but what I want to ask is that you put a fence on Santa Fe, right in the middle on the island, there's a terrible jaywalking problem there. At least put a sign up in English and Spanish so that people know that there's a real problem there. Because I don't want to be responsible for running someone over, and I know as a citizen of this country, it'll come back to me somehow because I don't have the luxury of being deported. Also, I ask that you stop making laws that cause strife and division in the community. There's a law that was passed some time ago that's now in litigation at the courthouse that should have never, ever, ever been passed, in my opinion, because all it does is just cause more problems in the community. And I'm asking for city leaders, what are you doing to protect me and the citizens of the city from the negative impact of illegal immigration? I don't know if you guys really know what's going on, but there's a serious problem. And we're right on target for another conflict in this country. If you think of 1776, and you think of the Civil War that took place, 2010, we're right there. We're due for another conflict. And I'm really begging you guys to really do something about this. We already have a problem with Al Qaeda, and it looks to me like there's going to be another attack. And I'm asking that there isn't a problem with this illegal immigration problem. I've been doing a lot of inside studies, and I'm really calling, besides that, I'm calling for accountability for the leaders that profess Jesus Christ as their Lord. Christian leaders should not be involved in these type of things. And finally, I'll leave you with this. I spent a little time in Romans 13, and it talks about honoring governing authorities. And I really ask that in your spare time, you can go to blu letter bible.org and read Romans 13. And for those that don't profess Christ as their Lord and Savior, you're off the hook because this is the best that this planet's ever going to get for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll go to the consent calendar. There are a number of items that we've had from the public to be removed from the item. First is C4, which is the second reading of ordinances, and that would be the first ordinance there, 2007-15. Then we have C6, and then we have C7. C6 is the Beautification and Improvement Commission, and then C7 is establishing the design-build-proposal evaluation criteria. And then C11, which is the speed limit on South Emerald Drive at Sunset. Okay, that leaves us a few others on the item. Are there any other items that the city council would like to remove? Mrs. Ritter?
I was just going to make a motion to the approval of the rest of the consent calendar, the remainder.
Just before you do that, Mr. Campbell, was there another item you wanted? Okay, then go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously. We'll go to item C4, and the item that was pulled would be council ordinance number 2007-15 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Vista, Adding Chapter 8.74 to the Vista Municipal Code to Prohibit the Retail Sale of and/or Distribution of Novelty Lighters." And Mr. Rabel, would you like to talk about that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Padre fans, I'm sure we can get home for the ballgame tonight. The -- this ordinance, when it does go into effect, will ban the retail sales of novelty lighters. I spoke to it when it was before you the first time. I don't see any overriding legal interest that the city has getting involved with the regulation of what retailers can sell. There is no downside. You're going to feel good. It's going to pass. But let's remember that those retailers now, when this goes into effect, will have just a little bit less liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Campbell?
I'm moved for adoption.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your votes. And that passes you with Mr. Lopez -- passes with Mr. Lopez voting no. Okay, the next item is C6, which is the Beautification and Improvement Commission. And Mr. Rick Cole, and what this item is, is a dissolution of that commission. So, Mr. Cole, would you like to come forward?
Councilman and mayor, having been a member of this commission for the last 18, 20 months, whatever it's been, something like that, and have enjoyed the opportunity to be on this commission, it's become evident that there is so much overlapping of this commission with other existing city operations and/or activities of other commissions or organizations in town, that there really is no need for this commission to exist with its current determination of responsibility. If the council would like to see this commission remain and come up with a clear-cut identification of what the gold submission of this commission should be beyond its existing gold submission, I would love to be able to continue to serve on the committee. But realizing the reality of the situation, I think it's time that the city, once again, as I said, decide whether they want it or not. If they don't want it, I will seek other commissions and to remain involved in this committee. I've been in this committee since '52, and I want to be as active as I can. It does me no good to serve on a committee that has no function. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. I appreciate Mr. Cole's service, and I'd like to take this opportunity to provide condolences to Mr. Cole and his family on the really untimely loss of your brother. A good person, well-liked in the community. He and his family are very valued here, and he'll be sorely missed.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I served as liaison to that commission from the council, and over the last several years, the energy in it's kind of ebbed and flowed, and presently, it just doesn't seem like there's too much coming out of the commission, and a lot because of what Mr. Cole said, that a lot of the responsibilities have been taken over by other committees and some of the city responsibilities. So I think I concur with him that probably this is a time to dissolve this commission.
Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Mr. Gronky. One of the things that they -- the beautification actually came down to my part of my neighborhood and did a beautiful job of painting some of the buildings down there, and they also had some of the churches, I believe, that were there that helped with that, too. I think it was North Coast Church that was out there. Please excuse me if I didn't mention the others. And they did a great job. I got to thank them. I thank for the commission for really going out in the community and being part of the community. They're definitely leaders, and they care about the community, and I agree with Mr. Gronky, too. Thank you.
Mrs. Ritter?
I worked with the commission several times, and they went out and they picked up cigarette butts from the highway off-ramps several times. They had to get permits to do that. They planted flowers in the downtown. They picked up trash off North Santa Fe in years past. But then, kind of the energy in the last year or two has kind of gone away, and I guess they didn't have a clear focus. But I had a comment today from someone over in Shadow Ridge that was disappointed that we're going to, you know, disband this committee because they, you know, they said beautification of Vista is so important. So, and I think the beautification is important, so I don't know if another committee's going to take it over and do those type of things. But I wanted to thank all the commission members, and Patrick Johnson was one of them that went out and picked up butts with us off the freeway and did some of those things. So I wanted to thank all the committee members that were there and served on it, and I guess that's all I have.
I, too, am very disappointed that we're unable to have people come forward. That's one of the main reasons that this is being disbanded, is because we could never get anyone to apply for the open commission seats on this particular commission. And I'm -- saddens me because I think that although we live in a beautiful area, and Vista certainly is beautiful, but I think that there's so much more that we could do in the neighborhoods to help people -- make people aware of the things that need to be done environmentally, as well as the beautification. And I'd hope that maybe this commission would be more of one in which it could lead rather than go out and do work, but to develop programs and to develop an awareness of the things that we might be able to do to not only educate people about the need to do certain things and to refrain from doing certain things. And so I really am not in favor of disbanding this commission. I think that we ought to make a more concerted effort to find people with some vision that would be willing to consolidate some of the efforts that we've talked about in beautification in the community and go forward. So that's my feelings. What would council like to do? Mrs. Ritter?
I'll just say one more thing, is that, you know, for the people of Vista, when I drive along the freeways and I see all the trash, people just seem to throw trash out of their cars around the off-ramps and on the freeway. And in town, it would be helpful if the people in Vista would care about beautifying their city and just, you know, help us with not dumping cigarette butts out when they pull up to, you know, the off-ramps and throwing trash out the windows, or even throwing trash in the back of their trucks that blows out along the freeways, because it just seems like, you know, we all could help to beautify the city and keep it cleaner. So I'd just like to -- and I just noticed that EDCO came out with their recycle information, and we are the lowest on the list of the city that recycle the least. So I'd like to, you know, challenge everybody to start recycling, fold your boxes, and recycle your things that can be recycled.
Mr. Gronky? Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's a lot of ways that we can try to get the message out for people to keep this world clean, but some people just don't listen to it. Unfortunately, this commission did a very good job in the past of taking on that responsibility. But as you said, it's probably not for them to take on that responsibility. It's for them to lead. I just haven't seen a lot of energy out of the group recently. I haven't seen any leadership come out of the group in getting the larger community involved. So, I'm gonna go with staff recommendation and make the motion that we go ahead and disband this group.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that passes with a three-to-two majority with Vance and Ritter voting no. Okay, let's go on to the next item, item number 11 that was pulled. I'm sorry, number seven. Oh, yes, number seven. This is Establishing the Design-Build Proposal Evaluation Criteria. And Mr. Rabel has pulled this item. So, Mr. Rabel, would you like to come forward and speak?
Good evening. Once again, Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent Drive. This is a very terse document I'm looking at. What's -- one of the most important things is what's on the bottom of the front page that says that the staff has already put this out in an RFPs, and that I guess they're looking to you to retroactively rubber-stamp it or approve it. If you do change it, one would think that might be the basis of a protest for one of the bidders in this competition. We're talking about spending well over $10 million of the taxpayers' money, and in the past, it would be based strictly on objective evidence, that being the lowest responsible bidder, which was 100% of the criteria up until now. Now, the cost becomes 20% of the criteria, and the rest of it is wide open. It's not quantifiable, and it doesn't seem to me to be objective. I've been involved in competitions and putting RFPs together, and there was a lot more discipline in the -- back when I was in the Navy in Washington than I witnessed looking at this. Based on resumes, reputation, and good looks, somebody's gonna get a contract. My question, if you're gonna ask questions, is the document, the criteria refers to subconsultants and principal consultants, but not a general contractor. I would assume that a general contractor is who we're looking for, but maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe an architect and engineering firm's gonna get the job and sub it to a general. I don't know. I wish you luck, and hopefully, the city won't have to defend this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Mrs. Putnam, is there anything you'd like to say?
It sounded like that there were a few questions in what Mr. Rabel said, and to try to answer those questions. Staff did issue these requests for proposals, but should the City Council decide they would like to change the criteria, we've left open the fact that we may issue an addendum revising the criteria if the council does not agree with the criteria. One of the reasons the City of Vista became a charter city was so that we would not have to always award contracts to the lowest bidder. We really thought it was very important to look at the expertise and technical competence of the firms. And when Mr. Rabel refers to principal firms, those exactly are general contractors. In our solicitation for both projects, we've sent RFPs out for all of the seven firms that we've sent RFPs to as design builders are general contractors. I think it's important for the council to look at these evaluation criteria. Cost is a factor, but it's not the only factor. As we all know, in the past, what has happened is a contract's been awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, and then there's been change order after change order. And by the time the project's finished, if you'd hired the highest bidder, you would have paid less. So, I'm not sure that that is the best criteria for selecting a contractor. I think experience is very important. I also think their approach to our projects is important, and the references is -- the references are another important criteria that are part of what we'll be looking at.
Okay. Mr. Gronky has a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first comment is the comment, you know, a reaction to the rubber-stamp comment just made. We've been going through this process for well over a year or two in the effect of passing the bond, pursuing a charter for our city, and having a lot of dialogue over the design-build. And I'm convinced that it is a good direction to go. It is a cost-saving measure. And when I look over the criteria for evaluation, yes, Mr. Rabel did put, say, 20% for fees and rates, but I think he ignored the fact that 30% is for overall experience and technical competence. 20% is for making or producing like construction projects, and 15% for doing this in a timely manner. I believe that this council has spoken to the public, saying that we will build these, and we will build these as soon as possible because that's what the community wanted. So, I think that this is a very good proposal, evaluation criteria, and I think that I will certainly agree with it.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Putnam, the only question I had related to subset E of capital E, which relates to the financial resources and stability of the principal consultant or design-build team, being a component of five or six components which only accrue 15% value. To me, that's rather important. I wonder if that might be combined up into another area to increase its value of consideration.
That's a great suggestion. Perhaps we could move it up to A. Part of the overall experience and technical competence, we could add the financial stability criteria as well.
In this area, not necessarily of the city's experience, but financial stability has been a factor in some major projects that have been really delayed and very disappointing. So, I would appreciate consideration on the council's part to move that up as part of A.
Thank you, Mayor. This last week, I had the opportunity to go up to Sacramento with the League of Cities, and one of the particular classes was about design-build, about how a city in Riverside, I believe it was Riverside, became a charter city and did a design-build. And they were fortunate to, it all come out the way they planned as far as on-time, the cost of the project. It made it a lot easier as a charter city and as a design-build. So, I'm looking forward. This particular company that we hired, since I'm on the Civic Center Committee, that we hired out of San Diego, I was very pleased to see them, especially they're somewhat local, and hopefully that I look at building some of our projects here, hopefully that we can use local people, local companies, whether we can or not with a big job like the Civic Center is, you know, we'll see. But I kind of doubt that any local company will do it because it is a big job. But the purpose of -- my purpose of having this city become a charter city was for the design-build and also to be able to do design-build, and also to be able to use local folks from our area to do the work. And when you do that, that money stays here locally, not somewhere from San Francisco or some other state. And I really, I think this is a great thing, especially taking that class this last week up in Sacramento, really convinced me that this is the way to go. Thank you.
Mrs. Putnam, from the comments that were made earlier, that gave the impression that this is -- that we're breaking ground, or maybe this is something really new. Could you kind of speak to that?
What we did in establishing the criteria is to look to what other cities have done. The City of Chula Vista is another charter city in San Diego County, and a lot of our approaches and suggestions for the request for qualifications, the request for proposals, as well as design-build proposal evaluation criteria have had a basis in projects that they've already successfully done.
So, have there been a number of cities that have -- or municipalities that have been engaged in design-build throughout the state of California?
Oh, yes. A lot of the charter cities choose to take the design-build approach. The general law cities really try to find ways to do it, but legally, they're walking a fine line. But most charter cities choose to do design-build to -- so that they can really hire a contractor that they're a partner with to get a better product in a timely manner.
So, you're telling me that all responsible low bidders are not necessarily responsible?
I don't think they're responsible with your money.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion on this item, Mayor.
Mr. Campbell, did you want to second that?
I would second it, but for discussion, I'd like to ask Mr. Gronky, would you consider including the moving of the financial resources up to A?
I'd be glad to amend that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously. The next item that was pulled is item number 11, which is Speed Limit on South Emerald Drive at Sunset Drive. And we have one speaker that would like to speak to that, Mr. Bruce Jensen.
Yes, my name is Bruce Jensen. I reside at 2130 Sunset Drive, and that's the Vista Mobile Home Park. And I just wanted to come in favor of this 35 mile-an-hour speed limit on Sunset, but also to hope that you will continue to study that area because it's a very dangerous situation there with that road. We have elderly residents that still drive, and getting in and out of our community is sometimes a challenge. We've had two accidents there since we met with the Traffic Commission here. I think it's been six weeks or so ago. They were serious. Fortunately, no one was killed, but they very could easily have been. One car went up on the sidewalk and went down the sidewalk for a ways, and fortunately, nobody was on the sidewalk. Knocked a van across the street and going the opposite direction, and fortunately, again, no one was injured on that side of the street. And then, just recently, we were actually out of town when it happened, but there was another serious accident, which a mother and two daughters were seriously injured there and taken by medevac out of the area. So, I'm just concerned that, you know, we don't forget this area right there because it is a dangerous situation. When we pull out of the park, when we come up to the Emerald or Sunset Street out of the park, we have to look to the right and to the left, and cars are coming both directions pretty rapidly. And some of the senior ones aren't able to do that too quickly. So, once they start, sometimes they see a car and they stop in the middle of the intersection, and we end up with a problem there. So, if there's more that can be done there, it would certainly be appreciated. I actually am representing R&amp;D management, the owners and managers of the park. We have three other parks down this area that are managed, and I would just like to keep our residents safe and everyone else, too, that's on the highway. So, I appreciate your looking into this and recommending it. Thank you.
So, what you're saying is this is a first, a good first start to providing better traffic safety at that location?
For sure. Now, we have next to our park, south of our park, as we come out, we stop out there, there's a tree that's on the property next door to us that kind of blocks, as you go up the hill there, kind of blocks our visibility to see who's coming around that hill and how fast they're coming. So, I've tried to -- I brought that up to Traffic Commission. I don't know if anything's gonna be done about it, but that definitely needs to go, or be cut back or something. Appreciate that.
See what we can do. Thank you very much.
And we also would like to thank the police and the fire and all the others in the community. They've done an excellent job. When we have problems in the park, which we have a number with the elderly people, they're quick to respond. They're always there, and we appreciate it, and I just want to give them a kudo for that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments that council has?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. What tree was he talking about? Do you know about it?
Yes, we do.
And is it on private property?
We're gonna look at it, and if it is on private property, then we'll help them get it trimmed. If it's in right-of-way, then we will trim it.
Yeah, coming down that hill, it's kind of in the way, yes. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion on that, and I have one comment to make that I'm shocked that there's a place in our city that doesn't have a posted speed limit.
We'll just hold our shock to that one location. I'm sure we have others. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All right, please cast your votes. Mr. Gronky, you need to press it again. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jensen. That concludes our consent calendar items. Next, we have one discussion item, and that's traffic control on Heather Drive at Alta Vista Drive. Now, I understand that we have one member of the council that must recuse himself. Is that true, Mr. Campbell?
Indeed. After 32 years of living there, I've had some interesting observations. So, I will recuse myself, and I put in a request to speak as a citizen.
All right. If you would like to go down and sit down in the audience, then? Okay, are we gonna have a staff report?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Several minutes ago, we received a request from a resident, Mr. Carr, to look at the traffic control at the two intersections of Heather and Alta Vista, as you can see in these two intersections, one at each end of Heather Drive. Due to the alignment of the two streets, through traffic on Alta Vista often used as Heather Drive as a bypass section to the Alta Vista section. It's in the bottom part of your picture there. Both intersections are controlled by a yield sign for the Heather Drive approach only, and some motorists have, we found that they've been disregarding the yield sign and creating a potential hazard in those areas. For your information, Alta Vista Drive and Heather Drive are both posted 25 mile-an-hour speed limits. The average traffic daily volume on Heather is just under 1,000 cars a day at 926. The average volume on Alta Vista is just over 600, at 636 vehicles a day. Both of these intersections are low-volume intersections and really do not warrant an all-way stop or a stop at all in these areas. Typically, we would not be doing a traffic control unless we were in somewhere between, say, 1,200 vehicles a day and maybe 1,500 vehicles a day before we would look at traffic control in those areas. The T-intersection configurations, as you can see here, the westerly intersection at Heather, the bottom leg of the T is in Alta Vista, and the top leg is the Alta Vista-Heather portion. The easterly intersection is the bottom of the leg is in Alta Vista, and we've got the top of the T along Heather and Alta Vista. Site distance is somewhat limited, as you can see by the photograph here, in both intersections due to alignment, both horizontal and vertical, and due to some vegetation in the area. As far as traffic accidents are concerned, we went back through five years of records. There has been one accident. It was at the easterly intersection. It was at the easterly intersection. It was a, I'll call it a near miss, where they, it was not a head-on, it was kind of a side-by-side type accident. We went to the Traffic Commission on August 1st, and the Traffic Commission made the following recommendation. Can we go back to the map for the, or go to the map for the traffic conditions? To remove the existing yield signs on Heather Drive approaches to its westerly and easterly intersections. In other words, remove both the yield signs. Install an always stop at the easterly intersection at Alta Vista and Heather Drive, as you see, and install a stop sign at the westbound Heather Drive approach to its westerly intersection at Alta Vista Drive. These actions were intended to reduce the potential hazard caused by motorists disregarding the existing yield signs on Heather and to reduce confusion regarding the assignment of right-of-way at these intersections. We have also, I also have three other alternatives, if you're interested in looking at some alternatives. And that concludes my report.
Okay, very good. We have one citizen that wishes to speak. Do we want to hear that one citizen?
I don't know. I don't know about that. That's...
We just go ahead and make our decision? Mr. Campbell, would you like to speak to us?
I'd love to hear the alternatives. I'm Bob Campbell, 1033 Heather Drive, been there since 1976. And like so many other streets in our community, as our, as our community has grown, many of the small streets have been come, cut throughs as a matter of convenience, and I think this one may be impacted somewhat by the heavy traffic on East Vista Way, and people are seeking other ways to get back and forth from Escondido Avenue. One thing that is most distressing is the rate of speed. In spite of the good efforts on the part of the traffic department to put in proper signage, nobody pays any attention to any of the above, and people just rip through there, and there's, where I've lived, there's a crown in the road, which, which I'm amazed in that period of time, I've not been totaled in trying to get out of my driveway. I do wish to hear the recommendation for options, but as there's one item that I think has possibly been overlooked, and that's at the west or the left-hand side of the picture in front of you, eastbound on Alta Vista, there's a very, very difficult curve there, and there's oleanders on the corner of the curve. And fortunately, the current owner, that's not always been true, but the current owner has made some effort to keep those bushes down most of the time, but sometimes they get up above sight level for drivers. And people moving northbound on Alta Vista intending to turn left down the hill at that point are coming through at a fairly good clip quite often, and somebody planning to come up and cut across and go up Heather Drive may or may not see them, particularly considering like time of day, lighting conditions, speed, and that sort of thing. So if there is a recommendation, it would be to consider that point as being really the place that really a stop sign is needed, which would be eastbound Alta Vista at the corner, intersection of Heather. But thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Mr. Pierce, would you like to give us the alternatives you suggested?
Let's go to alternate one, alternate number one. That was, no, let's go to the next one. Okay, this is alternate number one. This is stops for northbound Alta Vista approaches only. This would, in essence, make Heather the through path, the least resistant through path through this area. So we would be stopping the traffic northbound on Alta Vista as well, on both ends at both, or both east and west intersections. Some of the disadvantages, this, like I said, encourages us to use Heather Drive as the bypass for Alta Vista, which is the narrower, more curvy route. The traffic on Heather may not recognize the need to slow down for the abrupt grade changes that enters Alta Vista Drive, and that would be from the east side, there's a pretty good dip on that end, and it may require an adjustment period for the motorists for some new traffic control. Some of the advantages, the traffic volume is on the higher street for the pass-through. We'd have almost 1,000 ADT down Heather. The traffic from the lower-volume street would be the one that would yield to the higher-volume street. This was, would also reduce some of the confusion about the traffic and which, who has the right-of-way. It would set that condition. We would also be doing some restriping of the center line on the westerly and easterly intersections, but most likely, the more important one is the westerly intersection because it leads you around the curve, and we would be changing that. And then again, Heather is the wider street and the straighter street, so it is a safer street to travel than the, than the narrower twisty road that we see down on Alta Vista in the lower section.
What's your next alternative?
My next alternative is replace both yield signs with stop signs. That would be leaving it in the same configuration that we currently have, and just by making the requirement to stop at those locations instead of yield. Some of the advantages to that, it would de-emphasize the through, cut-through for And again, we would be looking at making the transitions. It would make you stop at the easterly intersection where the dip is in the roadway on, along the gutter line. And again, it would, it would take advantage of moving the traffic through there. If, we're still, we're still seeing 1,000 vehicles a day on Heather with the yield signs, so whether that's going to change, and we would actually move traffic down on the Alta Vista, we cannot determine right now.
Okay. Is there another alternative?
Another alternative is to leave it the way it is, right?
All right. We have two people that would like to speak, Mr. Gronky, or two council members, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I drive this area quite frequently, on a daily basis, and I can only say I agree with Mr. Campbell that on the west end, there is a real sight problem. And I have a solution to that, and I would say that not too many people are going to take the Alta Vista alternative if the Heather is there, because the Heather is a straight shot, and Alta Vista, it doesn't make sense to even attempt to go that way. I would, I would put a stop, as you proposed, in alternative A on the west end, simply because as people come up the drive on Alta Vista from behind the City Hall, no matter whether, well, if they're going to go up Heather, they really have a real problem with trying to see if there's any traffic coming up that way, from, from Alta Vista coming down Alta Vista. So I would put a stop sign there, and I think that would probably make that a safer intersection. Then on the other end, I would go with alternative B, or alternate number two. Because when you come down the hill on Heather, you almost come to a stop irregardless simply because of the dip that's in that road. And you're coming off that hill, and for those that may be unfamiliar with the road, not knowing about that dip, may have, exactly, may have a tendency to come down there a little too fast and, and get into that intersection without real good visibility, because you really do have to come down relatively slowly to prepare yourself for that dip, and also to look off to your right to see if there's any traffic coming in. So my recommendation, if we were going to alter this at all, would be to put the, on the east end, put the stop sign as you see right there, and on the west end towards City Hall, to actually put it on Alta Vista coming down the hill because of the sight problem.
Alta Vista coming...
On the other way.
Right there. Let's see. Yes. As you, as you come up this road right here, and in the travel lane, these trees on your right, it's like nearly impossible to see through there, even on a good, clear day.
So you put the stop sign on Alta Vista, or...
Coming down. Where that yellow car is, right around there.
Where that yellow car is.
Yeah, yeah, because that way you would stop the traffic coming down the hill. It's, they really, they really are the major issue there.
Okay.
And on the other end, I would put it down on Heather, simply because, you're really slowing down anyway to prepare yourself for that dip, and if you're not unfamiliar with that road...
There we go.
Yeah, I would put it as, where that white van's coming down.
Right.
I would put on that intersection, because that, there's a major dip there, and there's a major decline that people pick up speed on, too. Just a thought.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
I'll go along with Mr. Gronky on that, because that, right where that van is, actually, if you drive that, the day I went by there, and the asphalt actually has rips out of it, that people are coming down pretty fast and, and hit that pretty hard. So it'd be a good idea to slow them up before that, even though it's coming downhill, that's a downhill right there. And put one right there, because Alta Vista just keeps swinging around, doesn't it? It just keeps going around. Is that correct?
To the right.
To, to the right, yes.
Yes, it goes on down.
And there should be more indication on that it's a continuous road, it seems like to me. You see how you only have the yellow so far? And so you get kind of confused there. People coming down, that, where that truck is coming down there, continue that yellow further down past that, that intersection, it seems like it should be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. or Mrs. Ritter?
We all have different, we all have different things.
Well, the fact is, I just want to tell everybody in the audience, Judy, I just want to tell everyone in the audience, we've all gone to traffic engineering school, so we're all experts in traffic, traffic engineering. That's why we're able to do this and make such important decisions. Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
I agree, I agree on the eastbound, right here, where you're saying. I think that probably should be a stop sign there. At the other end of Heather, because I, I travel this probably maybe four times a week, the same, and I always go over Heather. I don't ever go around Alta Vista. It's, it just takes too long. Heather is, Heather is the logical way to go. But the other end, they're right, that is a bad turn there, so I'm thinking you should, as you're coming westbound toward, toward City Hall, that maybe you should have a stop at the bottom of that, because if you don't look, if you don't look there, the cars, you know, come around that corner there. So stop, maybe both ways there. Westbound, let's see, is this eastbound? No. Yeah.
So you're stopping Heather?
I'm thinking you need a stop sign...
That's what Steve said.
Going eastbound, yeah, what Steve said, going eastbound, but then also maybe coming down the hill, stop, so you can look and see who's coming around the curve there. So I'm, is that another, is that a third option?
Yes.
So that's what I, but I, so I guess we all agree on the one, the other direction. We all agree on the eastbound one.
We don't.
We don't?
Not yet.
Well, okay, then we'll get a fourth opinion. A fifth opinion.
I, I'm sorry, I go along with the Traffic Commission, so...
Stop signs everywhere?
So, would someone like to attempt a motion? Unless you have any further questions?
I'll repeat them and go one at a time.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion among, on my original proposal of putting a stop sign coming down on Alta Vista, as it, as it comes around the corner on the west end, and coming down Heather on the east end, and see how that flies.
Okay, do we have a second?
Wait a minute, this is this picture that you have right here on Alta...
No, it's not.
You don't have that option.
No, you don't have that option.
The closest option we would have, oops, oops, back up.
Come in here, you confuse me.
Okay. The closest, yeah, I think this is probably the...
No, this one over here.
It has the westerly option, correct, Mr. Gronky?
Yeah.
No, no, that's not the...
No, 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 because on the east end, you're going to have coming down Heather.
Right. I'm just saying the western is where you want it.
That's where I would locate it, no, as you had it before. Simply because of the people coming down Alta Vista...
Have a straight shot.
Those coming up, and if, if you're going to put one, you know, no, on the, on Alta Vista.
You're going to put it there.
I would, I would do that one, simply because people that want to go through to Heather have to really slow down because of the visibility there. And if you don't, again, I just see it as a safety issue. I see it as a safety issue. It's hard to see through those plants. You're going to slow down anyway, so I would put the stop there if I was going to put anywhere in that intersection.
And then we'd remove, we'd replace the yield sign.
And then one on Heather, coming down the hill, simply because of, as, as Mr. Lopez says, some people that don't know that are going to bottom out of that, because there's a huge, there's a huge dip there, and, and it's all downhill.
Okay.
And I just want to say one other thing, too, and, and this is for code enforcement. I, I do go this way all the time, and there's somebody at the top of, and we all knew where they is, at the top of Heather doing some construction, and when his trucks are out in the street, they need to be controlled, because there's no way that you're going to get around those trucks and get in another lane because you're at the top of the hill. So would you please, code enforcement, please go out to that person and tell them to control his trucks when he's having offloading or unloading, or whatever he's doing at his, at his home there, please.
So what was the motion?
The motion stands, what is this?
This.
She's asking you which one it stands.
No, it was, it was not this, no. It is, it is the, on the west end, it is this, on the east end, it is coming down Heather. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for discussion.
Show me, could you show me the original proposal from the traffic engineer?
The original?
The original, the staff, staff recommendation.
Or from the Traffic Commission, I'm sorry. Oh, that's all the way back here.
Is that it right there?
Yes, that's the Traffic Commission recommendation.
I'd like to comment on this one. The, the reason I don't like this one is because you have too much control on the right-hand side. You don't need all that control there. And on the left-hand side, it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is, is the visibility of people coming out Alta Vista, and this does not solve that problem, because people coming up Alta Vista, going onto Heather, still have to deal with those cars coming down Alta Vista that they can't see. So this, I think it's, it's overkill on the right, and it doesn't solve the problem on the left.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. I changed my mind.
See?
Traffic engineer, experts in traffic engineering can do that.
That's right.
All right. Do we have, we have a motion, a second on this?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. So you're saying the, on Alta Vista have proposed stop sign, move...
No, here, let me, let me go back to one of the pictures that are, okay.
No, that's not it.
Well, this is going to be the closest one that we have.
Okay, no, so you're put, so you're saying put a stop right there, where that little dark one is, instead of putting it Alta Vista, put it on Heather.
There, stop sign.
Put it on Heather, is that correct? Okay.
Okay, now, now go back to the one you were just at.
Remove yield sign on the easterly.
Uh huh.
There'd be a stop sign there.
Stop sign right there.
Right there.
Yes, that's what I want.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
I think we agree.
I think we do.
Well...
All right, please cast your votes.
Woo.
Yeah. Okay, and that passes unanimously with, well, with four council members voting yes, and Mr. Campbell unable to vote. Okay, very good. I'd like to recognize the presence of all the students that we have. I assume that you're all from Rancho Buena Vista High School? Oh, well, thank you for coming. We appreciate that. We hope that we didn't discourage you too much about ever wanting to have a career in government, and especially, we didn't want to discourage you from becoming traffic engineers as well.
[laughing]
But thank you for coming, and we hope that you learned a little bit more about your community. All right, last item on the agenda is reports from various members of the council. We'll start, before that, we'll start with remarks from our city attorney. Anything that you have, Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing special this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Piper, Mrs. Gelder?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have the capital improvement budget, five-year capital improvement program with a 20-year sewer master plan following on the heels of it, but that will be presented to council on October 9th, in 2008. In 2007, and so I think it's exciting, and we've put a lot of planning into the document, as well as we hope to have the 2008, 2009, second year of our two-year budgeting process adopted at that same time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say a comment about, about the date. Six years ago, the U.S. experienced quite a tragedy in our nation, and since that time, many decisions and actions have been made by, at our national level, some that have divided this nation. Presently, polls show that there's a complete lack of faith in some of those actions and individuals who made them. But please remember that we live in a world where only, the good Lord has only given us humans to fill those positions, and you know what a mess they can get into. So when you go through life, just remember, I would rather live in a nation where we point fingers than guns.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Ritter?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're thinking of 9/11 today, I'd like to thank the Vista employees that went back and served in behalf of the, of the nation, really. George Solano in particular, with his confined space skills, which were badly needed at that time, and others, including the fire department people, that made a real contribution. So... So thank you to Vista employees for, for participating and helping others, that's very important. And then, Mr. Lopez, the mayor, and Mrs. Geldert and myself were in Sacramento this last week for the League of California Cities, which is a statewide body representing 478 cities, I believe, and we're learning quite a bit about how other cities do things better, so we brought back, I think, some good ideas. But in addition, it gave a few of us an opportunity to go over and talk with our legislators as they were wrapping up their legislative session, and I can't tell you how disappointed I am personally in that, in that body. They spend months and months and months deliberating over really important issues, and at the last second, do, do either bad water or just bad, bad thinking, they make changes that, that are very disruptive to good policymaking, and they leave the cities, I think, pretty much out of their thinking in terms of the impact. So a number of items are in the works right now that are very disruptive to local control within cities, and I'm hoping that our state legislatures will, before they make decisions, will think of their impacts on cities, as in fact, most of them did come from city councils at one time. But somehow, they got to Sacramento and forgot that. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was there, too, and I really enjoyed going to Sacramento, learning what other cities are, are going through. We're all together here, and one thing I learned there is that, that the only way a city really gets, gets ahead is by all of us working together, our community getting involved, our city working with our community, and when you work as a team, you come out a winner, and it's important that we all continue the youth to get involved in civic activities and commissions, and we have all those things. And it was, it was, it's a good thing that, that the League of Cities have, have this conference, because when I go, we get up at early in the morning, and we're there 7:30 in the morning, and we don't leave until 5:30 in the evening, and I'm telling you, we go from class to class, and I have a restaurant here, and at the end of the day, I have a lot of energy, but when I go to these, these conferences, boy, I'm tired, let me tell you, because you're there constantly listening the whole day. And I'm glad that, that our city, our council goes, because we do come back with a lot of great ideas for our community, and, and it's a wonderful thing, and I, and I thank our city that they do go. One other thing is that a week ago, we had a family here that's been in this community for many years, and the mayor, I think he was a mayor or a councilman, Troy Doan, was here when the city was incorporated, and his wife passed away last week, and she was a wonderful lady, and been involved in this community for many, many years, and happened that we were in, in Sacramento when it all happened, and so I feel for the family, and a great lady is, is now gone. Thank you.
And again, to you students that are out there, I, I do hope that perhaps some of you might wish to, in the future, look at a career in local government. It's an exciting career. It's something that too few take upon themselves to, to look into, and I hope that this taste that you've had tonight doesn't discourage you, but that it might encourage you, because I know that I've spent more than 40 years in local government, and it's, it's an exciting career, and very, very rewarding, and it gives you an opportunity to serve and to, to help those that, that need your assistance, and so it's a very worthwhile career. With that, my gosh, it's only a quarter to seven, isn't this a little too early to be adjourned? But we will do that nevertheless. This meeting is adjourned.